I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While you're going to do the prayer.
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of December 19th.
Second.
Discussion? Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick? Yes. Okay, we have an organizational resolution, reorganizing resolution to establish rules related to conduct and notice of meetings, set dates of session for 2024, and elect president and vice president of the board for 2024.
I move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll. Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick? Yes. And now Steve is officially president.
All right. As with our custom, we rotate the office on a yearly basis. We're a board of equals, and that indicates that we just kind of share the burden, and as we know and by practice, when something comes up that one of us can't handle, the other ones certainly step in. So that's a good tradition to have. With that, we have a number of resolutions. Appointing county commissioners of various committees and areas of responsibility of the year. We shared that list last year. Prior, had there been any changes or any other concerns? With that, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any further discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick? Yes. Hambley?
Yes. Okay. And then we have another resolution designating and granting various authority to the Medina County Administrator.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to clarify. I know we took specific action for the end of the year, this past year. So is the thought that this would avoid that necessity, or is this just more for emergency-type undertakings if the offices are closed or something like that? What's kind of the expectation?
Yes, I would say yes.
That was kind of my understanding, too.
That's in the language of the last paragraph.
There was a reference to holidays in there, and I thought, well, if we needed to take a step like that, we could still take specific action because we'd see it coming.
Well, it still prevails. We can call a meeting anytime we need to with adequate public notice if we need to take care of business. And normally, we're around to be able to do that. So, okay. With that, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick? Yes. Hambley?
Yes. All right. Next, have the honor of being able to have a resolution commending Ronald V. Stoller for his more than 18 years of service with Medina County, whereas has come to the attention of the Board of County Commissioners that Ronald V. Stoller is retiring from the Medina County Juvenile Detention Center on January 2, 2024, and whereas Ronald has been employed with the Medina Juvenile Detention Center for over 18 years, working as the Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent, and whereas Ronald served with two different probate and juvenile judges, performing his duties through leading, managing, directing, and coordinating all functions of the Medina County Juvenile Detention Center, and whereas he will be retiring with over 36 years of public service with his combined employment with the City of Medina and Medina County, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners wishes to recognize and honor Ronald for his commitment and diligent work for Medina County. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Medina County, Ohio, that Ronald V. Stoller be and is hereby commended for his over 18 years of service with the county of Medina. Be it further resolved that the Board wishes to take this opportunity to offer best wishes to Ronald and his retirement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any further discussions?
Well deserved.
Indeed, indeed. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick? Yes. Hambley?
Yes. And before we present our judge, did you want to come up, make a few comments while you're here?
Sure.
One of the two judges he served with, we won't ask which one he liked best.
Ron has been fabulous. That facility is preeminent in the state, and that is based upon the hard work of all the people who are there, all our staff, but also the direction and the leadership that we've had trying new things. Caring about kids is something we don't look at them as objects, but we try to reform them. And Ron has been instrumental in that. Coming from a position of law enforcement when he was arresting people, wrestling people in bars, making arrests of people, and then having to deal with me and other people in the court, has been a significant change for him. And he has done so much for the youth in Medina County. We should be blessed to have more people like him in the county. I'm very, very proud of having him serve under him. He's been a great employee.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Ron, you want to come forward? Judge, you want to stay with us while we present this to him?
We'll give you the appropriate pictures.
Put Ron in the center here.
Put him up in the center.
I do miss fighting people in bars, though. I still miss that.
Retirement. Yeah, all fun. Now you get to do rebuttal.
Oh, boy. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Judge. You know, people, at times like this, often say, "It's been my honor. It's been my privilege to do this, do that, to serve." Hopefully, they mean it. I certainly do. Some of you know that never in a million years did I think I would work with kids, especially troubled kids, because I didn't like arresting kids. I would prefer to arrest adults. It's just a much easier system, and you didn't have to deal with parents and guardians and all that. And when I left the PD and went to the detention center, I thought it was maybe the biggest mistake of my life. But I came to get to, once I came to get to know some of the kids and get their stories, no surprise here to anyone, but their home lives are the main reason why we find kids in our building, why they end up there. So many of them have so much potential and promise, and it's been great getting to know some of them. Some of them I still stay in touch with, and it truly has been a privilege and an honor to serve the county. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I know, Ron, you're going to be a hard act to follow, whoever comes up, I mean, whoever that is. So, yeah, indeed. But you'd be great, a persistent advocate for the kids, the families, and, of course, our system. So, thank you for your service.
And thanks for the support from the commissioners, county administrators over the years as well.
Thank you. All right. All right. We now next move to our published agenda. Are there any public comments regarding pending resolutions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and start with the departments. County Engineers Office, we have Dan Becker.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Let's see what we have here. I've got four resolutions for your consideration today. First resolution is accepting and awarding the 2024 replacement of bridge number 49 on Marks Road. The second is approving right-of-way dedication plat for the main drive located in Lafayette Township. The third is approving the final plat for the reserve at Sharon Phase 1 in Sharon Township. And the fourth is approving the annual assessments on improvements for that same reserve at Sharon Phase 1 in Sharon Township.
Move to approve the four resolutions?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
I have to get used to that.
Okay, that's all right. We'll make it. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick? Yes. Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeremy Senko, our sanitary engineer. What have you got for us, Jeremy?
Morning and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing and directing the sanitary engineer to execute an agreement with ANZOR Advisory to provide construction supervision and inspection services for 2024. And the second is amending a professional design service agreement with Chagrin Valley Engineering for the Second Street Sanitary Sewer and Water Improvement Project.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick? Yes. Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeremy. Debbie Kiley, our Job and Family Services Director.
On the opposite side of the room today. It's weird.
Happy New Year and welcome.
Happy New Year. Just two resolutions for your consideration this morning. The first is accepting and awarding proposals for professional services relating to our TANF and food assistance job development services. And the second is accepting and awarding proposals for foster family software services.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick? Yes. Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Nicole Lee, Human Resources Assistant. Good morning.
I have two resolutions for you today. The first one is approving personnel changes for employees. We have four new hires, one in solid waste, two at county home, one at JFS. Two promotions, one in sanitary, one in transit. Nine rate increases, two in sanitary, one at solid waste, two at building, three at JFS, one at transit. One leave of absence at transit, two return from absence, one at sanitary, one at transit. One resignation in sanitary and one removal in maintenance. And then the second resolution is authorizing an employee assistance program agreement extension with all one health.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick? Yes. Hambley?
Yes. Thank you, Nicole. Brett Thomas, our Finance Director.
Good morning.
Good morning and Happy New Year, everybody. I have eight resolutions for you all today, but three of them are practically the same thing, so this will go quick. Our first resolution is increasing appropriations. As everybody knows, we are on a temporary budget for the time being. This is actually just a bump up because the department forgot to notify us of an expense that's an annual, so that's where that came from. Our second one is amending the authorization for our spay and neuter services. We had another veterinary hospital that wanted to participate this year. Our third resolution is approving transfer of inventory between the different offices, just some office furniture. Our fourth resolution is declaring excess property. Our fifth resolution is expenses for travel for the adult probation department. They're going to the Probation and Parole Association Winter Training in Seattle, Washington this year. Our sixth is expenses for the county engineer. Out of state here, we have the National Association of County Engineers Conference in Palm Springs. Our seventh resolution is expenses of other county officials. Notable here is the sheriff is sending people to Ballme, Elyria, Ohio for the Evidence Technician for Patrol Officers and Investigator Training. And finally, our eighth and final resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $594,452.43. As always, copies of the bills are kept in the auditor's office.
Move to approve the eight resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick? Yes. Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Brett. And Chris Jacob, our County Administrator.
Morning.
Good morning.
First resolution this morning is authorizing the execution of both a stop-loss agreement and an administrative services agreement with Medical Mutual for assistance in administering our employee health plan for the 2024 calendar year. Next resolution approves the purchase of replacement transit vehicles utilizing the Department of Transportation State Contract Purchasing Program. This is for two new vehicles, estimated price $208,930. Next resolution accepts bids for the Medina County Emergency Management Agency Safety Services Facility and awarding the bid, this is an award to Kavanaugh Building Corporation, Akron, Ohio, low bid $752,562. Next resolution approves a contract for the provision of medical services for the Medina County Sheriff. This is a contract for the, again, 2024 calendar year at a rate not to exceed $45,000 annually. And fifth and final resolution authorizes Medina County Sheriff's Office to proceed with purchasing one new 2023 Ford Explorer. This would be to replace a vehicle that was totaled in an accident recently.
Move to approve five resolutions.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
I know the EMA building resolution is on there, and I participated in a conversation with Administrator Chris Jacob and also the Prosecutor's Office, which was a follow-up to a discussion we had at the EMA Executive Committee meeting, which all three of us were present at. At that EMA Executive Committee meeting, or I should say, at the time of that EMA Executive Committee meeting, there were some concerns over Kavanaugh's low bid, which included a timeframe that was substantial completion of the project was outside of what we need...
The grant window.
Right, the window where we have to expend the funds. Because of that, the Executive Committee made a recommendation to approve the NOC contract. Almost simultaneous with that meeting, it was actually prior to that meeting, but it just wasn't, we weren't aware of it in the discussion we had in that meeting, we received a revised timeline that Kavanaugh prepared, not because we had told them anything about the timing with NOC, but because we had expressed some concern over that window when we met with them the prior week. And that revised time schedule involves substantial completion within that time window. So, just to kind of close the loop, I wanted to make reference to that specifically. I did let the Executive Committee know with an email last week that, you know, this was likely going to be the step after the conversation with Prosecutor's Office. I'm personally comfortable with this. I'm more comfortable with this than undertaking a decision where we go with the second high bidder and then we could find ourselves in some kind of dispute over that procedure in light of the fact that Kavanaugh's timeframe changed. So, I just wanted to kind of, for the benefit of the record, and anybody who was comparing our action today with what the EMA Executive Committee did, I thought that was important context, so. So, really, the issue would have been completion, but also the payout schedule. Is that correct?
Well, the payout associated with completion, progress payments, yes. And I don't think there's any doubt that, based on the revised schedule that was submitted, that we should satisfactorily meet the requirements of the state capital grant drawdown.
And you also communicated with Kavanaugh that the approval, assuming we undertake it, is materially based on the fact that they had that revised substantial completion date?
Yeah, I did send that correspondence over the weekend, so.
Well, it is about $30,000, almost $32,000 difference, so I think I'd like to spend a bit less than we need to on that building. And with the experience with Kavanaugh, there was no doubt that they were capable of doing the work, so I think that's a good direction to head.
All right. Any other discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick? Yes. Hambley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Department Updates. Laura Toth, Office for Older Adults.
Okay, we're starting the year off on a positive note at O.A. I like to keep it positive, so with the completion of our upgraded kitchen facilities. After this meeting, I'll be meeting with the contractor and the county facility superintendent to go over punch list items, so we're here. We're at the end. We look forward to beginning the service of hot meal delivery and having large events back in the dining room. The first delivery of hot foods was this morning, and it went pretty well. We also began with a new grant-funded meal caterer. Medina County has no choice over that. That choice is made by Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging. So, we began with our first delivery, food delivery from that caterer. So, it was a little bit of chaos, you know, ironing things out, but all in all, I thought it went really well. We're planning an open house at the agency on the afternoon of Thursday, February 29, from 2:30 to 4:00. Everyone's invited to come for reception and a walkthrough of all the facilities. We chose a date a bit in the future as the bridge reconstruction. The adjusted date for completion of that is not till, I believe, the second week of February. But even if there are more delays, we will have that event on the 29th. We'll just put up signage and voila, we'll have it go forth. I will be completing the first quarter report of the Healthy Aging Grant this week. Thus far, we've utilized funds primarily for housing upgrades and for food utilization. We're looking forward to more programming in the coming months. We were notified last month that we'll be allowed to purchase hearing loops for several locations in the county. This includes Suprema Senior Center's dining area and activity room, the multipurpose room at the Brunswick Recreation Center, which we use for senior events up there. We have the contract to provide senior service coordination. And of particular interest probably is the Medina County Courthouse.
Yes.
So, yeah, it was, it's really fantastic. So, with Suprema Senior Center and the Brunswick Rec Center, I wrote and asked for the variance because of, you know, senior, combating senior isolation, more getting seniors in the community, more socialization. For the courthouse, there is an area, the Healthy Aging Plan, that talks about fulfilling civic duties. And so I kind of seized on that. This will enable seniors to not only participate more in court proceedings, but also, you know, possibly serve the court in other ways. So, I thought it was a very good use of funds, and the state agreed, so that's exciting.
It was exciting.
Next month, I look forward to sharing our 2023 calendar year data with you. Our annual report will be done by the open house at the end of February. Office for Older Adults has completed all requirements, again, this year for the Subaru Save the Love Program, Share the Love Program. This program is focused on meals on wheels and highlights the needs for meals for seniors in the community. By completing all requirements, we will receive probably about $2,500 of unrestricted funds, and that usually comes about June. So, that's really nice for not too much work and also getting the word out. Our Christmas party on December 7th and our New Year's Eve party last Friday at the Brunswick Rec Center were both really good events. They brought in over 120 seniors each. Everyone enjoyed the holiday festivities. We had a band last Friday that was really popular. And then for our Christmas party, we had the Brunswick Choir walkover, so everybody really liked that. Our next large group event will be the Pajama Party, which is scheduled for Friday, the 26th, so get your jammies out. I'm looking forward, I think we're all looking forward to an exciting 2024 for our agency and for the seniors of the county. Thank you. Happy New Year.
So, the open house will be on Leap Day?
It'll be on Leap Day.
That's cool.
Yeah, exactly. It just worked out that way. I'm like, picking this one. We had it set for the beginning of February, but then the bates changed. I'm like, well, let's just go there.
I think that's perfect.
Yeah, works out. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura. See, next we have a resolution appointing township representatives in alternate to the Medina County Council of Governments on Drug Enforcement. Where's Medina County Township Association's nominated Joe Canastraro and Kent Patterson's representative on the Medina County Council of Governments on Drug Enforcement?
Bruce Christopher's alternate?
Yes, and, okay, yeah.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion?
All good choices.
Yep. Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick? Yes. Hambley?
Yes, okay. And a resolution appointing representatives in alternates to the OPWC District 9 Integrating Committee, points me as the representative and Aaron Harrison as the alternate. County Engineers Representative is Andy Conrad, and County Engineers Alter is Josh Wolf.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Swedick? Yes. Hambley?
Yes. All right. And I'll open up a public comment. I see we have Nate Emppich. You want to come forward, Nate?
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, morning, commissioners.
Good morning. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. As you know, I wanted to attend several weeks ago, but there was a school delay, and that kind of messed with my schedule, so wanted to acknowledge, and I appreciate that you've received a lot of comments or questions about Chippewa Lake within the last month or so. Thank you for reaching out and touching base with me. I wanted to give you a brief update and then make myself available for questions either today, or certainly you all know how to reach me. We're looking to update the rules to Chippewa Lake, and we began that process shortly before Thanksgiving with a draft proposal of rule changes that was shared with different user groups, shared on social media, shared to our list of boaters. And it's an attempt to, as Chippewa becomes more popular, we have interest from throughout the region, throughout the state, to get a handle on how we can safely allow different user groups to coexist. We have fishermen, we have some paddlecraft, you know, kayak, stand-up paddleboard folks, ski team, the yacht club, some powerboats out there. So, we want to find a way to kind of balance those uses. First week of December, we had several public information sessions at Buffalo Creek Retreat, our facility in Guilford Township, and I think we had about 200 or so people attend between both sessions, collected feedback there that was done so by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. And then we've established a stakeholder group. So, there's a representative from Gloria Glenn's Euclid Avenue, Chippewa Lake, the ski team, the yacht club, park commissioner, and also a park police officer. They had their first meeting before Christmas. There was 100% participation, and it's my understanding that they'll meet several times, maybe as many as five times over the next couple of weeks. And then their work, not only reviewing feedback that's been received, but then talking among themselves and among their different constituents, their work will influence a second draft, which will then be shared publicly and will have additional public meetings. So, we're, I would say, we're probably not even halfway through the process. The draft that was shared publicly back in November will change. I've heard things such as, you know, easing up, adjusting the no-wake times, establishing some no-wake zones, of course, education and enforcement, and those are all great suggestions that should be part of the final plan. So, with that, if you have any questions...
So, do you think this whole process and schedule that you have now set out to us has been communicated properly out to the public?
I hope so. We've shared it on social media. We've shared it on our website. It was, at least, on the homepage before the holiday. I don't know where it is now. And then we have a list of boaters who we share updates about water quality testing, those rare times where we have to go to no-wake speed because of E. coli blooms, or when it floods, we do close the lake. And it always sounds silly to say you close the lake because of high water, but we close the lake because we want to do E. coli testing through the Health Department. So, we have a robust list of boaters, and we've emailed them as well to describe the process. So, I would hope that those participants in the stakeholder group would also then communicate with their folks, too, so there aren't any questions, there aren't any rumors, everyone knows kind of where we are.
So, this was, I think, implied in what you said. I just want to make sure. Stakeholder group is meeting, I mean, separate and apart or free from kind of the confines of the initial draft rules. They could go in a completely different direction from that, or are they somehow bound by the preliminary proposed rules?
No, they could offer alternative suggestions, for sure. The draft, then, the second draft, will be written by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, based on the stakeholder group's work, their feedback. I'm hoping that we'll see some sort of restrictions on use time, no-wake areas, et cetera. What we're trying to avoid is a situation in the summer where, say, for 15 hours a day during the daylight hours, that we have jet skis and other users that can go anywhere we have jet skis and, and other users that can go anywhere at any speed at any time on the lake, because inevitably we'll have some conflicts. We've had some close calls in the last couple of years, a couple that, that became, that I became aware of even after the public information session. So I know there's some work to be done. And certainly part of that is on our, on our end with education, as well as enforcement, and, you know, making sure we have a presence out there.
That, that's my other question, too, the enforcement side of it. From a, you know, just with the rules changing, to the extent the rules are going to change, or the, the, you know, will that require an enhanced enforcement presence? And is that in your plan for the, for the coming year as well?
I do have an initial, an additional police officer on the budget for '24. It's a part-time, 1,080 hours, I'm sorry, 1,040 hours for '24, but that will allow for more rotation within our department. We patrol the lake. Division of Watercraft, ODNR, also has the ability to patrol the lake. So our hope is to have a presence on the water essentially every day this summer, to be, you know, to be visible, to be out there, to be ambassadors, to answer questions, but also maintain that people are observing the rules and, and playing nicely on the water.
And what ODNR has, do they have certain requirements for a lake of this size, or are they looking for certain things, or is this all within the local, local control?
It's local control. The draft that was shared in November included, was influenced by, by comments that I had, as well as our police chief. They also, Deb Green, who's the, kind of the rules guru, she also looked at what works in other communities. You know, the process so far, they've shared with me that they're not surprised. There's often a, an overwhelming, wait, don't change anything, kind of reaction. But then they get to a point where maybe not everybody's 100% happy, but the rules are changed for the better. So the one thing we don't want to do is make the rules too complicated or confusing for both an administrative and policing aspect, but also for the users. So I don't want it to say, you know, every third Tuesday, it's these hours, or, you know, Sundays only from 1 to 3, you can do this. Because anytime you got to check your phone, your, your calendar, we want it to be known that, you know, maybe it's weekdays and weekends, but that will be signed not only at the boat ramp area on Westfield Landing, but I'd also like to work with the different villages and neighborhoods to, to post a new set of rules there as well.
So it's safe to say there are changes coming. They're just yet to be determined.
Sure, absolutely. Yep.
I just want to thank you for responding to the, well, certainly the outcry of expanding the involvement of the various parties. I mean, you follow the advice, I think, of the village councils, who said basically, you know, hold off on moving on this forward, broaden it, and with the stakeholders moving forward with their input in that. But I wanted to get clarity, specifically, who actually has the authority for writing the rules and then enforcing the rules?
So the rules will be written by DNR and Division of Watercraft. As the owner and manager of the lake, certainly we have a, a big part of that. But we would lean on them as we did back in 18/19, to essentially write and codify the rules. As far as enforcement is concerned, we're the primary as the lake owner and manager. The, the Sheriff's Department could, if they had a, had a, had a boat. And I've talked to Sheriff Gryce about-
If he wanted to.
If they wanted to.
And we wanted to fund it.
Right, right. Well, well, that's the other reason I'm here. No, I'm kidding. No, I'm kidding. But I've talked to-
It's not included as a budget, I'm pretty sure.
No, 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 no. No, but I've, I've talked to Sheriff Gryce about that as an opportunity, maybe in the future. And certainly Division of Watercraft can, can go out there and patrol. But we're the primary as the park district, as we own the lake.
Yeah, I just want clarity as part of the record as to who actually does the rule, who actually does the enforcement.
Yep.
And, and naturally, the process is supposed to involve the locals that are doing the enforcement, as well as the owner-manager of the property. But essentially, it's state rules.
Mm-hmm, correct.
Got it. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it for today.
Great. Thank you so much for coming and explaining it.
Thank you, and again, happy new year.
Thank you, same to you.
All right. Anything else? I thought I saw the coroner hanging out there.
I saw her out together.
Hanging out together, okay. You scared her away, Nate, apparently. Is this like, all right. Well, move away from public comment and then move into discussion session, give her some time to get in. Colleen, do you have anything?
So, yeah, now that we officially received the aging grants for our courthouse for the hearing loop, I'm probably going to have to sit down with Chris and Matt, and we'll discuss, because I don't think the price will include every single room over there. I think it would include all of our courtrooms and maybe a few hearing rooms for each of the judges. So, well, I'll bring a proposal to you for specifically which rooms. And I, I would like to discuss with the judges, if a couple of their hearing rooms get looped, which ones they wanted to.
So we did have one courtroom with a hearing loop, correct?
No.
When it was built? No, or that was just removed entirely? Because then it was discussed.
It was discussed, but I don't think anything over there is looped right now.
Okay, got it. So this would be making-
So I had taken the company through the whole thing, and we got prices for each of the main courtrooms. And then we got a standard price for the hearing rooms, because they're all very similar. So then we'll have to look at the price and, and decide how many hearing rooms for each judge, you know, we decide to loop under the price of the grant and, and so I'll get that together and-
They have some flexibility over there, too, that if you said, you know, you wouldn't, like you say, you wouldn't need every hearing room, because they can always, if they have a specific need, right, they could reshuffle for a certain room.
Right. But I would, if we told each judge, for example, like two of their hearing rooms, so I'm just using that as an example, I'd like them to pick which two they would want, and you know what I mean? But assuming that we're going to do all of the main, major courtrooms.
Of course. And the cost structure we have includes DR Court as well?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, and actually, you know, her, the other courtrooms are a lot larger, considering the scope of work, you know. So her room is more reasonably priced than some of the others.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I'll get that proposal together, and then we'll make some decisions.
Fantastic. Sounds good. Aaron?
I have my weekly NOAC update.
Yeah, I saw that, that just before Christmas, they released this report for us to give a comment-
Yes.
During that week.
Well, we, it was a two-week period, but it was a two-week holiday period.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, it was, it was the, the summary, and, and I, I don't know how closely you looked at it. It was a summary in the sense that it happened after the fact, but it wasn't exactly a summation, because it was a fairly voluminous document that they produced of the meetings, the two days of meetings that they had at, with the, I think they were calling them, they were the follow-ups to the stakeholder sessions. I forget exactly what they were titled. But we had our representative, John Callis, who provided an update at our last meeting, and also, also Bethany Dentler there on behalf of Medina County. I haven't had a chance to chat with Bethany about it, because I think about the time I got the notice that they needed this review, and she was out on, over the holiday, and I haven't had a chance to catch up with her since. But I did talk with John Callis, and, and he had sent me a summary of kind of his, his takeaways from it. But the essence, and I'm going to report this back to, to Grace today, too, because today is the deadline to respond. The takeaway from my conversation with John and, and his, his summary of it, basically, the information and what was discussed up there is all there. I don't know how helpful it is or how instructive it will be from a drafting perspective, because there is so much in there that any final document or proposed draft that they put together could probably find its way back to a reference point in there. But what I would like to see is, to the extent we're, we're incorporating these recommendations and not incorporating these recommendations, I just have a lot of questions of why. You know, what, what makes this recommendation that was presented up there, you know, make its way into the final document, and these recommendations that were referenced up there not in the final document? My concern is that they're going to, to kind of make it a majority rules type of a situation, and say, well, that was only raised by one or two people or four people. But the representation from the Collar Counties, as I think were called up there, was low at those meetings. We sent two people there. I think there was some representation from Lurin County, one, maybe two people, one, maybe two people from Lake County. I don't know if anybody was there from Jaga County. So the, the vast majority of the people in the room that were producing the document were Kiowa County interests. And so to, to say, well, because it was less of an urgent item in this two-day period, kind of undermines the fact that, you know, we sent representation up there with the expectation and the understanding. And I, I believe they did a great job of representing our interests, you know, from our, our larger county as a whole. So to the extent those things are ruled out because there were only two people there saying it, I'm going to have some concerns with. Now, I haven't seen that happen yet. We haven't seen any documentation, any drafting of this yet. But I just, I'm, I'm, I want to make those concerns kind of known ahead of time that, you know, that, to the extent we're ruling out certain conclusions, if it's based on just the, the people who, who were there, it's not terribly helpful. So, and this dovetails with this next phase, which at the last NOAC board meeting, I voted against this, but they, they decided to move forward with an additional round of engagement sessions. And the, kind of the preliminary takeaway I had from those first engagement sessions was there were certain opinions they were looking to adopt, and there were certain opinions that they were saying, well, those aren't the, those aren't the right opinions. So we're going to kind of rule those things out. And I thought, well, whether, whether that's right or wrong, I'm not even going to opine on that. I, I have an opinion about it, but I'll keep it to myself. The, the reality is, if we're doing engagement sessions, we should be engaging the region as a whole, and kind of meeting people where they are, not saying, well, these people are the nonbelievers, and, and, and we're only going to preach to the converted. And I, I just don't think that, that works really well when you're trying to get a regional consensus. So my point, when I voted against it, was just to say, if we're not actually looking to build a true consensus of the region, I don't see a lot of benefit in ongoing engagement sessions and, and the, and the corresponding cost to it. And so some of the concerns I have about the follow-up meetings and how that's going to become what's presented at those additional engagement sessions, I'm going to voice those concerns for what it's worth. I guess for the record. Nothing else.
Well, I'd agree. And Honesty was like a Hallmark movie during the holidays. It was not unexpected. There was no very few surprises and fell asleep in the middle of it. Sorry. It was one of those things that-
[laughing]
My wife knows.
It was hard to get through a 90 minutes, also. It was a long read.
Okay, this is, okay. It's not, nothing riveting there.
And the problem with the makeup is, we're always going to lose on majority rules. I mean, always.
Well, the question comes down to, I think, clearly, when they do that other engagement, what will the plan actually look like? What will require the constituent governments to do to comply with that? And what will be the consequences of, quote, not compliance or complying with, with those, those provisions? And those are all questions that will have to be answered. I know that the grant, that they're aiming, using this document to help, I guess, to support, asking for more money, that will be for the board to take a look and see what exactly are we binding ourselves to, and obliging future resources of the regional organization. Are we wasting a lot of money for things that are part of a wish list that really are not going to come to fruition? Or is this because of policy changes or things going on at the national level, or within technology? Or is this something that actually, that, like I say, having a regional organization to take credit for what we're already doing to address many of the concerns? Increased amount of need left, but open space and parkland, and where farmers markets, just go down the list, that we already are. Many of the initiatives that have been identified in other plans. So in my mind, like, okay, well, I guess we'll continue as a member to, to vote accordingly, according to our conscience, and try to have as much good quality input into it. And I think John and Bethany both did a good job covering it and, and representing that. But we know that they, they're in charge of the train, they're running it, and regardless of what we, or hyper-loop, depending on your view for the outcome of this.
It's still a thing.
Apparently, maybe not. But anyway, so that, that they, they, they're in charge of it, and we'll go along with it as, as long as we have to, I guess.
Yeah, and I would say, because you, you mentioned, I probably didn't do a good enough job of, of highlighting it, but John and Bethany and the other alternative voices, their, their presence is noticeable in the document.
I know. Yes, I saw those. Yeah.
And, and so I do want to tip my cap to, to their efforts, because they're, if my assumption is correct, and a lot of these things that, that we're concerned about don't make their way into the final document, I'm just absolutely certain it's not, for lack of trying, on the part of, you know, our, the, the three of us and, and then our representatives at those meetings. And I'd go so far, you know, Bethany goes to the board meetings, Andy Conrad at board meetings, Denise Testa at different, you know, board meetings and committee meetings. And so, you know, we've, we've really, I think, made a good, honest effort to engage in the process. It has felt from the get-go like the deck was stacked against us in a lot of ways, because our opinions aren't necessary for them to pass the final product. But, but our efforts to engage, I think, have been genuine throughout the process. And it's through a lot of people's contributions, that's been the case, so.
Well, and, and I have to say, there are other counties that have not been as involved as we have. That basically, we know, have, have, in, in some sense, criticized, opposed, do not support it, and unfortunately, walked away from the table. And I think that that is a detriment to the process. It's better for us to certainly represent our viewpoints and make sure they are documented.
Yep.
And they've been doing a stellar job, as well as you have regarding that. So thank you for your consistent insistence of, of a open and transparent process.
We're, we're doing the best we can.
All right. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
I think that's it.
Okay. We do have the coroner here. Chris, did you want to bring up for public discussion the, I think we talked about it briefly before, understanding this regarding the morgue and the contract with the Medina Hospital as a community hospital for Cleveland Clinic.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
Thanks, coroner, for coming today.
Thank you.
As you know, the board had previously allocated $169,000 for a project which involved the expansion and improvement of the morgue facility located at Medina Hospital on State Route 18. Subsequently, we had executed a license agreement between the county and the clinic, Cleveland Clinic Foundation, to utilize that $169,000 in ARPA funding for that specific purpose. Subsequent to that, we were contacted by the clinic and the hospital folks to discuss, and the coroner and I attended a meeting approximately a month and a half ago regarding cost increases for this project. And at that meeting, we were informed that the revised total project budget has increased from $169,000 to $327,708, some of which was a result of having to modify the cooling units on top of the roof, as opposed to on top of the local cooling units. And there's some additional electrical HVAC and plumbing work that had to be also accomplished. So basically, we left that meeting with the request from the clinic slash hospital, Medina Hospital, to provide an additional $158,000 from funds at the county level to move this project forward. There were some concerns about, my concerns, about the detail and the narrative and the description of the project in the license agreement that had been executed by this board in October. So we are seeking clarification on exactly the scope of the project. I think that's easy enough to get accomplished. The problem is the funding, the additional funding request. The clinic subsequently did send information back in November, November 21st, saying that they are able to commit $30,000 from their general funding that they had in place. Didn't think that they'd be able to pursue any additional funding options on their end. And so if that $30,000 commitment is still there, it decreases our request for additional funding down to $128,000. So I thought it'd be helpful to hear from the coroner about the, the ongoing, her perception of the ongoing need for this project. And, doctor, if you'd like to come on up?
If you wouldn't mind, please. Yeah, I guess just to remind us about what the anticipated needs are, the capacity, and as you've indicated several times, obviously the growth, and being able to accomplish, please, if you wouldn't mind, because we're, our recording here, so just-
Happy New Year, everyone.
Oh, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everyone. About three years ago, I was noticing that we were going to have, with our population increasing, that we are going to need possibly more spa, or we are going to need more space. Right now, a county, and I think our population at present is approximately 188,000, we are able to use Medina Hospital's cooler facility. They have a total unit, workable unit, that houses four bodies. Now, over the course of my seven years, I have had calls in the middle of the night telling me that I have two bodies in the morgue, or in their cooler facility, that I would need to get them out because they have, unfortunately, two critical patients that were probably going to pass away that night, and they would not have any space for the bodies. So that got me thinking that we probably needed our own space. I think I was looking, you know, statistically, you know, Medina County is growing. I think we're the second fastest county growing in the state. We're growing about, what, 6% a year? And so we're going to have more, more, more population, we're going to have more bodies. So with the ARPA funding, I thought that we would be able to retrofit the morgue into the old autopsy suite at the hospital. And I thought this was, I talked to Colleen and initially, and then Steve, and we were talking about that we did like the public-private partnerships. And this was an already-made building. The electricity was in place, security was in place. So I thought it would be ideal. And then I went and I made the request known to the CFO. And he also thought that was a good, he thought, wow, that's a great idea. And we came up with this original plan. And as far as I know, he- And as far as I know, he took it to the hospital and I guess it had to go through multiple committees. And I think it was over a year and a half before they came back and then we signed the agreement and I thought, oh, this is great. And then, then they came back and they said the engineering department told us that the space, we, we initially were going to retrofit the cooler and then we're going to use the cooling units and have the cooling units on top of the cooler like they have at the old, their old unit. And I guess the engineering department felt that the BFUs or how much heat was generated would not be compatible. And so unbeknownst to us, they created a new, they didn't talk to us at all. They created a new plan, including, you know, taking the units on the top of the hospital. And then Chris and I were given that, you know, unexpected price and I'm just like, oh. And then they, they did have a meeting with us and they explained to us why the cost overrides. And then I talked to them and they, they thought, I, I don't know how it got lost in translation, that with this collaborative effort, they would also use this facility. I mean, we're going to have a place for 20 bodies and, you know, potentially if we used scissor lifts and stacking, that we could have potentially more units. So in case of another pandemic, a mass casualty, we would be able to accommodate all the bodies, you know, efficiently. It's a state-of-the-art, you know, energy is better than their old one. I think their old unit is from 1980. And so that's where we left it. And I think that's where I, Jim came back and talked to you and said they could potentially find 30,000 or 28, how much was it? $30,000 more. So I'm coming to you.
I do have a question. So for clarification, the 327, or if it's going to be closer to 300 now, are we paying for the whole thing and yet they're still going to have as much?
They would have, they would, they would have access to it and use it.
And this would hold, you said 20, so we're going from four to 24 on the?
20 and then potentially, I don't see the need to, to, to purchase. I mean, but potentially it's, it's a large, I, I don't know the exact dimensions, but it would be able to hold a significant number of bodies.
What, what are other, I mean, you know, counties with comparable population to ours? What do they typically have for storage?
Well, Lorraine County has their own.
County.
County facility. Most of the, most of the counties that are our population and higher have their own facility. Now, some of these counties also have, do their own autopsies. I don't feel the need that we need to go in that direction because first of all, we are very close to Cuyahoga County. And they're, they have a, they have a adequate number of forensic pathologists. And so I don't feel that that would, to, to go in that direction would not be benefit to the county. I think it would be a waste of money. But, and then also it would, I, I don't know costs, but to build our own facility?
Well, sure, yeah, we're, we're not talking that kind of money.
Yeah, but I'm just.
What, what is the, do you know what capacity is in Lorraine County?
No, I don't, I don't. I could get those information.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
And what is our typical need countywide at any given time? Is it one, three, seven?
Uh, like yesterday, we had our first overdose and transporting, I'd probably say two to three bodies a week.
Okay.
That we would need.
But that we're actually storing?
That we, yeah, that we would have to store. And it's only not for weeks on end, it is for until, you know, a lot of times we have people who don't have significant, significant others that we can contact. We, family members at, at the, at the scene are distraught and they're kind of, they don't know which funeral home to use and, you know, I, I, I tried to help them or they're like, we don't have the money, can we just, could you store our loved one and we'll try to figure out tomorrow? And I can't leave the loved one there. So we've been seeing an increased trend where families, it, it's, it's quite expensive to take care of your loved one. And so a lot of families are blocking and asking the county to take care and to cremate and to do all, and we, you know, we, we have the funding, but not for every single one. And I try to explain that to them, that, you know, we have a limited amount each city or township, but it's not something that we can, you know, if that person is truly indigent and has nothing, then we would take care of it. But, you know, you know, if they have a house, you know, it, it's, it's very hard and, and you try to be very diplomatic, you know, especially when they're very upset and.
Sure. Well, so I get, that begs the question as to when the county is obligated to have custody of the body.
Correct.
Obviously, if an individual dies in their home, normally it was like a funeral home is providing that service or is that fall to the county and the county defers it to?
Right, well, the funeral homes, it's, it's interesting. The funeral homes are being a little more forceful. They, they want to know that you are going to use them. And so they want a commitment right up front. And I've actually had, I'm not, in the past where funeral homes have come to the scene and the family uses him and ha, and they're like, well, we're not going to pick this body up unless you're going to use us. And then they left. So, you know, it, funeral homes are a business too. They want.
Sure.
So.
So we're basically the last resort and that's what I'm trying to.
We are the last resort.
As part of the record is that.
We are the last resort.
It's not just our population growth, it's just a trend in terms of how families or individuals basically defer that cost onto the public.
Correct.
As opposed to the family themselves assuming that responsibility for proper internment of, of the body or disposition.
Correct.
Whether it's cremation or being buried.
Correct.
So families literally walk away from their, I'll say their loved ones, their, their relatives and just dumping it on the responsibility onto the public. We see more of that?
Yes, we're doing, we're seeing that. That's a, that's a huge trend.
Okay.
And you mentioned that you get, you've had an occasion where there have been calls in the middle, what happens then when the hospital says we need to create this space?
I sell my soul and basically I beg the funeral homes. And, you know, then in turn, they call on me for favors in the sense of they can't get a, a doctor to sign. And so then I, I help them and I take care of their, their death certificates when I, I could say, no, you need to go back and fight for this death certificate. And they're like, well, we need, you know, we're having the funeral tomorrow, can you please help us out? So.
But I mean, it, in terms of cost to the county, are we paying for those? I mean, relative to the investment we're talking about making, and my, and I'm, I'm a big fan of public-private partnerships and I appreciate the fact that this building is already standing, but I also have to look at it from a standpoint of we're improving somebody else's facility, you know, with county funds and that, that is a concern to me. So I, I'd like to compare that to what our cost is in the current environment where we don't have our own space.
Okay, well, as far as finding, I mean, cost as far as taking care of the bodies?
Whether we're using the, the clinic facility or funeral home facility or, or something else, is, is there a cost that we're going to be saving by, by making this investment in the new space?
Okay, well, an, an average, an average cremation from a funeral home is around $4,000. If we do it through a facility, like a cremation facility, it comes down to about 1,800. The counties storing the bodies are hel, is helping the families, you know, make that decision where, you know, if, by working with them, like if I take the body and I put that body in the, the cooler for two to three days, I'm able to help the family try to organize, you know, some of them do GoFundMes, but then I explain to them and I, I help them work, you know, instead of using one of our, our funeral homes, it's, you know, they have the cost and the overhead, helping them direct rather than the families walking away and not even attempting to take care of their loved ones. You know, most of, I, I would honestly say about 80% of the families who are walking away, if they were found with a more economic way to take care of their loved ones, they would do it. So I'm.
The cost comes more in when we, when we, as the, the, the last resort entity, when we're responsible or become responsible for completing the cremation.
Correct.
Okay. So that, go ahead.
Yeah, so to be clear, the storage facility is just until most families make the decision which funeral home they're going to.
Or if I can help them make, you know, the decision where they can come up with the funds to get a, a professional cremation society. And then also just, we're, we're a large county and, you know, we need to be able, in the case of a mass casualty incident, it's not if, it's when, we're going to have another one. If we did have a mass casualty event where I had eight, 10, maybe 15 bodies, I would have no place to put them. I, I could call O-Mort and they would help bring up a refrigerator truck. But it's, it's hard to have a truck and then have a command center. This way, if, you know, I talked with Medina Hospital that they're very, you know, we could have a command center nearby and we would be able to take care of all those bodies and put them in our morgue rather than trying to put, put them either in a refrigerator truck or a, you know, put them to different funeral homes and have the fam, families, families concerned and going one way versus the, you know, to another area. I think, I feel in our heart that we are a county that could be able to, we should be able to have an area to take care of our dead and do it in one area and then be able to organize and, and be professional about it as well as organized and take care of the needs of the family with a mass casualty event. And I always feel it's better to be prepared than to tax, you know, to call them and say, you know, I have four bodies and they're like, well, two of our spots are filled, what do I do with them?
So where's Medina Hospital in terms of this moving this project forward? Are they waiting for us to make a decision as to the additional funding and then they'll go through the process of the final engineering design, going out for bid and of course?
Everything is, is, the bid and this, this was the final cost. There would, hopefully, they said, you know.
Well, are they moving forward?
No, no, they're waiting for us.
They're waiting for us, okay, that's what, okay.
So everything is, this is, this is it, I mean, in the sense.
Right.
Are there facilities other communities that we'd have access to as well or is Medina?
No. I've, I've tried to develop a relationship with Summit County, but.
I mean, within the county?
Oh, within the county. I, initially when I started this about three years ago, I, I went to Wadsworth Hospital, Summa, because Wadsworth Hospital is, is empty and, and they did not want to entertain that. Also thought of Lake Medina, but they did not want to entertain that also.
They don't, they have a pre-existing facility.
Correct, Medina, yes. Yes, they've already had a facility. What I also like about Medina Hospital, it is central. I talked to weights and they have, they do, their weights were very, very willing to work with me, but, you know, I wanted Medina Hospital or Medina, it's a central location. It's really in the county. And they said, well, we have room up in Brunswick and Brunswick is pretty far north. And also the squads were more likely to work with me and take a body to Medina Hospital versus taking, taking, getting, taking them, taking them out of service to go all the way up to Brunswick. So I, I'm trying to utilize, because we, we have to also pay for transport. I do not have my own transport at this time. So we utilize a transport service out of Akron. I, initially when I started my tenure, I was using the funeral homes, but they have all have farmed that out also, so they would not make any money. They would act, it would cost them money to use their transport services to help me. So they have all dropped off, so I do not use funeral homes to help me transport my bodies. I use a transport service out of Akron who has worked with me and kept their prices very low. But when we have an accident on Route 18 and we need to get the roads back open, we need to get the traffic, we need to get things tidied up, the squads are more willing to work with me if we go to Medina Hospital. So, and then also talking to Medina Hospital, I would have my own access. And then I would be able to follow the squads and take them in. Right now, it's a cumbersome process. We, the squad will go to Medina Hospital, they have to walk into the hospital, they have to wait for the security and they have to wait for the nursing supervisor to take them down to the morgue and drop off the body. This way, with the new system, we would be expedited. I would have my own security card and I would be able to get them in, get them out, get the squads back in service, which is the ultimate goal to get, so that we could take care of our residents.
So at this point, the, the request is for an additional $128,000. And given it's ARPA funding, if, and given we've, we've not acted on this the last two months, they'll still be able to meet the ARPA guidelines or in terms of the timeframe, correct? For construction and completion of payment, so. I'm, I'm fine with going ahead and approving the 128,000 increase. If we could put that on the agenda, that'd be agreeable?
I'm, I'm okay with that. We've got funds available, I know, from with.
Yes, there's, there'll need to be a revision to the license agreement to more accurately reflect the scope of the project.
Okay.
With the various legal councils and trying to get.
And when you say, when you say scope, sorry to interrupt.
Sure.
You mean the size of, I mean, the capacity is?
Of cadaver storage.
Because I, I would say the, the material component of this that makes me inclined to do it is that upping the capacity from currently four to 20 is worth the investment, I believe.
Significant percentage, yes.
Right. If, if we're talking about just a couple of extra spaces, the, the numbers, I think, you know, change. So, so, yeah, I do, I want to make sure that it's clear that, that the size and the scope we're expecting is consistent with their revised plans, so.
Okay, all right.
I'll, with your permission, I'll work with the coroner.
Good.
And our legal counsel to try to facilitate the changes.
I think you, I think this is really going to be a good thing for the county. As I said, we're, I think at 6% a year, we're going to be hitting 200,000 before 2030, maybe. Every time I, I'm driving down another road, I see another development. I don't think of houses, I think of more bodies. I know that's, I, I know that's a, it's, it's what I do, but I, I, I thank you all for helping, helping us, help our residents. I think this is a very good thing.
Yeah, and, and thank you for coming and explaining all the, the changes and so forth. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Other discussion session, Colleen, you had EMA Director, job description?
Yeah, I, this was the one that we were looking at and, yeah, there's one for Rhonda. So I, I want to get this launched today.
Sure.
So since we did delay it, I would like to change the 1/31 date to, is that Friday, February the 9th? Is Friday, February the 9th? Rhonda, can you look? I want to do it. Oh, you don't have your phone?
No.
Matt, is Friday, is the 9th a Friday? Of February 9th?
February, yeah.
Just make sure it's closing down on Friday.
Of 2024.
I should have looked that up. Okay, so I'd like to change it from the 31st to the 9th.
Yep, okay.
And then, Steve, there was some, you were.
Yeah, there was a section involving inherently hazardous or physically demanding working conditions.
So, Aaron, are you okay with just completely removing that paragraph?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's best described for, as I indicated in my email, first responders for an EMA director.
Okay, so.
And I think they're.
Which would, I mean, I cannot put it on record, one of my concerns is if that is actually part of the job description, and they are inherently exposed to hazardous or physically demanding work conditions, this position is in the wrong retirement category, because it's PERS, it's not first responders. So I think that wherever this came from, I know it was amalgamation of some other director's position, but that's not one I don't, I think.
The most recent ones in there.
I think this does not describe that job at all. And so I think that removing that makes the most sense.
Okay, so I'll make the date change.
Okay.
And then I'll take out that paragraph, and we're going to get it, you know, as broadly, you know, CCIO, the State Fire Marshals Association, the police associations, probably Department of Public Safety, get it out to as many. I don't think we're going to go the Indeed route, because we, we get, end up getting, but we'll, across the state, we'll get it out as broadly as possible.
Right, sounds good, great.
And that was another item that we discussed at the executive committee meeting, so we're kind of crossing that off the list, because they had left that for.
Right.
Right.
For our.
So, once, once we get all the applications, they will be going to Holly. I will then get them, the two of you, to present to EMA for, you know, your next steps.
Sounds good, great, super, very good. Otherwise, it's, it's a good, good job description, I think it captures.
Okay.
Principally, everything I understand that job requires. And it's, I know it was shared with all the executive, EMA executive committee members, and no other feedback, so which case?
Yeah, well, Chief Walters said he was fine as is, but I don't think he'll have a problem taking that paragraph. He was, you know, he had.
Right, that was before, I think he, it's on my email, so, okay, cool. All right, anything else on your part?
I have nothing else for today.
I have nothing else?
I, I have one other EMA-related question that I realized I was going to ask Chris. We talked about this briefly, but we, the resolution references compliance with local, local codes, I don't have.
Local zoning, yeah, yeah. Little authority.
Is there anything that we need to do as, as it relates to Kavanaugh, or is that already incorporated into the bid specifications, or is that something we need to make sure we incorporate when we work with Kavanaugh? Because we, we wanted to make sure that our intention of compliant, we've, we've received, I guess, a informal acknowledgement that we're going to be okay with that, with the proposed site and the plan layout and everything. But the people who are parties to that conversation aren't in the picture anymore, so we want to make sure that we're compliant.
So is it a material change to the conditions of the contract?
I had, after we had met this morning, I had asked Ben to contact the township zoning department to see if there's any additional step we need to take. We do have a filed application that was signed off on by the township, but that was, the scope was slightly different. There was a renovation of the existing facility that was included in that. So he's going to check and get back to us, and.
So the scope is actually less?
It is.
It is, it's less, so.
The, the new construction, excuse me, the new construction was also contained in the original zoning application in addition to the renovation of the existing facility. So now that we're removing the existing facility, I think it just, it's probably an easier project for them to review.
Right, right.
So I'll wait Ben's response, once he talks to the township zoning folks and go from there. I did notify him that there was a change in the zoning department there at the township level, which I don't believe he was aware of, but, so.
Okay.
I'll keep you posted and go from there.
Sounds good, great.
Thank you, Chris.
Matt, do you have anything? I know Curtis, usually you're not, you've been very quiet, so. I should have allowed you, asked you during public comment if you had anything, so. Okay, good. Anything else? All right, I've got nothing. There's a motion for executive session?
I will move that we convene an executive session to consider compensation for a public employee.
Second.
Move a second A discussion? Roll call, please.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes. And that should do it for today. We will be coming back after executive session and just closing. Everybody have a Happy New Year and see you next week.